All our regular Board of Education meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get started, I just want to take a moment. Retired teacher, longtime teacher Wayne Eldred passed away just before Thanksgiving. And Mr. Eldred was here for many years. He was not only a teacher, but he was baseball coach for many years. He was also JV football coach for quite a long time and made quite an impact on students and athletes during his term in Richmond. I was a teacher a long time ago, back in my day, so very long time ago. But just want to take a moment to remember him and keep his son and his son's family in our thoughts and prayers. Okay, our mission statement, Chris.
All right, at Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. I'll go ahead and do roll call. Jessica?
Here.
Kyle?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Danielle?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And I'm here, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, next, looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Sherry, you ready?
Still moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chris, looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
All right, I have motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and amend the minutes to reflect through January 8th, 2021 rather than until January 8th, 2020, as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Jessica, is that you?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved and supported, is there any discussion?
Is Mary, are you approving the agenda or are you approving the consent item?
We already approved the agenda, we're approving the consent agenda right now. Oh, Chris, that was the wrong motion. Thank you, Mr. Wamsley.
Thank you, thank you.
We're just doing the consent agenda. All right, let's try it again.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
All right.
I'm sure it won't be the first mistake.
You guys are gonna have fun tonight. Okay, it's been moved and supported. I just want to point out in the, with respect to Renee Ara, the Higher for Executive Director of Curriculum and Educational Services Board in our documentation, it's wrong, says effective date 11/11, it's 1/11/21. So that's what we'll be approving is 1/11/21. Mr. Wamsley?
We had a, some resignations and, under the resignation and retirement regarding some Schedule B positions, and we had two bus drivers. One is looking for additional hours in healthcare and one is continuing to build the church that's currently being built. So I wish them the best of luck, they've given a lot to the district, Danielle Kennedy and Brian Wise. And as part of the Schedule B, Mr. Rubin, for the girls soccer resignation that will be posted. In your backup, you'll see a termination in the pack up paperwork. We were tentatively approved for the person to hire and work in the district. And upon the further investing, or further processing that goes through, we were notified that the person cannot. So we have officially terminated the person in the position. And new hires, Amber Jackson is the media. She will also officially begin when we return to school on the 11th. That's more of an internal move, that's among the paraprofessionals. She's currently a Title I professional.
Mr. Wamsley, let me, let me just stop you for a minute. There are people out in the audience that aren't muted. If we could ask them if they could please mute themselves because we're getting kind of some background noise.
Going through, muting the ones I can see, yep.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So Mrs. Jackson will move to the middle school media specialist position. And we will post for a Title I position to backfill hers. Mr. Hill is, Dan Hill is, will be appointed or awarded the Junior Varsity Girls Basketball Coach Position. One of the questions that came up was regarding the freshman girls basketball. We do not have the numbers, I verified this afternoon. I verified this afternoon with Mr. Reinhardt. We don't have the numbers to run a freshman girls basketball. And finally, Renee Ara is the recommendation for Executive Director of Curriculum and Instruction. And I believe Renee is there she is. So Renee, if you'd like to unmute yourself and introduce yourself to the board.
Hello, I'm Renee Ara and I was born and raised in Las Vegas, Nevada. I've been out here for about a year and a half and I'm just now kind of getting used to the cold, just a little bit. And I'm just really excited for this opportunity and I'm very passionate about teaching and learning and I just can't wait to get started with the community of Richmond.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Also, just in your package, just more of as an informational purpose, you'll see current positions that are open. Some of those are constants that we are looking for, childcare, et cetera. We will update our posting and put that out. So after the beginning of the year, hopefully we'll fill those final positions. That's it.
Okay, thank you, are there any questions? Brian, I just have one with respect to the JV girls basketball. I think Dan Hill's a great choice, but I'm just checking, we must have changed our policy of not hiring parents of players? Is that, is that correct? That must not be a policy any longer?
There's nothing that prohibits a parent of a player from coaching or being an advisor for Schedule B type of position in our policy.
Okay, even though we represented that previously, we're not doing that any longer?
Correct. The, the only thing that, that is hesitant on that is when you get a relative that's supervising another person, that becomes, we'd have to sign some other supervision. So for instance, she doesn't work here, but if my sister worked here, I'd have to have someone else evaluate her, I can't evaluate a relative.
Okay, no, I was just specifically asking about a coaching job. It's okay to be a coach and be a parent now at Richmond schools, okay?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. With that being said, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? You're opposing, Chris?
No.
Or was that a delayed aye?
It was a delayed aye.
Tape delayed.
Tape delay? Okay, the motion carries. Renee, welcome to Richmond Schools. We are very excited to have you join our team and work with us and our students and teachers and administration, welcome.
Thank you, I'm very excited.
Okay, next. Sherry, we're looking for an approval of our 11/23 regular board meeting minutes?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and amend the minutes to reflect through January 8th, 2021 rather than until January 8th, 2020, as presented in the attached documentation.
It's been moved and supported. Board, the reason we're, board members, the reason we're doing this is it was brought to our attention that when the motion was done by Sandy Fortuna, she said 2020. And so even though all of our backup information said 2021 and that's what we represented to our parents and the public, we just wanted to clean it up so that our minutes reflect accordingly. It's been moved and supported, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, our bond update, bond refunding resolution.
Here with us tonight is RJ Naughton from PFM Financials. He's our financial advisors for the district. And RJ, I will pull up the PowerPoint for you, so if you just give me a second. Sure, screen. Okay, I will turn it over to RJ, RJ, just tell me when you want me to click.
Certainly, thank you Superintendent Wamsley, Madam President and our members of the board, I'm glad to be here. There's a refunding opportunity for refinancing a 2013 bond issue. And refinancing a bond is a lot like refinancing a mortgage, where bonds at a higher interest rate are replaced with new bonds at a lower interest rate. And since these are voting bonds, the benefit is to your community in, in the way of lower millage on your debt. I'd like to briefly go over your existing debt and the refunding analysis. And then if needed, I can go a little deeper and answer your questions and I'll let you know what the timeframe is like for this refunding. So the next three slides are the existing debt of the district. And your second notice debt is the 2013 school building and site bonds. And when bonds are first issued, we have principal maturing each year or most each, most every year. And the first 10 principal payments, or 10 years, cannot be called in before their stated maturity date. So maturities 2024 and beyond could be called in early, starting in the year 2023. So even though the first call date on the bonds is not until 2023, it is possible to refinance the bonds in 2021. And how we do that is we issue refunding bonds and the bond proceeds are used to buy treasury securities that go into an escrow account. And that escrow account covers the interest on the principal to be refunded between now and the call date. And then on the call date, call in the outstanding principal. And the escrow would also cover the issuance costs of the refunding. So Brian, if you could advance to the next slide, there are the next two bond issues. The 2014 school building and site bonds and the 2017 refunding, which was a refinancing of the 2008 bonds. And after that, we have the 2018 building and site bonds. And that was part of a series from an earlier voter authorization. And then the first series of last year's voter authorization or, yeah, was voted in November, bonds issued in February. And that was 31 and a half million, just over. That was your most recent bond issue. And then the last column of that schedule are the total bond payments. And that gets carried forward onto the millage projection. And on the next slide, we have your taxable value growth history. And the district's been growing at over 3% growth for the past four years. And we see the taxable value history there. You were at negative growth during the recession years. And in 2001 through 2006, the district was growing at 5%, 6%, 9% growth. So that's just a good history of your taxable value. Moving on to the next slide, we have the millage projection before refinancing. And the district's currently levying 6.95 mils and projected to be at that level for the next few years. Now, each year when the new taxable value is released at the end of May, we work with Tammy, the business manager, in setting the debt levy for enough to cover the next year's bond payments because your bond payments are covered by debt levy tax receipts. So that millage, that's the millage projection, 6.95, and then it falls off from there. I will add that you have the next series of bonds from the 2019 voter authorization of 880,000 to be issued in 2024. And since it's not a very large issue, the equivalent millage to be levied in 2015 is about .16. So that explains why there's a little bit of a millage drop off going from 2024 levy to 2025 levy. Brian, do you remember that next series of bonds? Is that for technology and buses or just technology?
Yes, it's primarily technologies and buses.
Okay. And that's similar to your, your previous voter authorization before that? You issued the bonds in series. So next, I'd like to go over what we call the escrow cash flow requirements. And it's also a summary of the debt payments being replaced by the refunding. So if we're refinancing the 2024 maturities through 2028 of the 2013 bonds, there's going to be an escrow set up with the bank. And it's going to cover the interest payments on the principal to be refunded between when the refunding bonds are issued and May 1 of 2023. And so that's 139,931 for each November of '22, May of '20, November of '21, May of '22, November of '22, May of '23. And that's when the bonds are being called in. So part of those cash flows get carried forward to the far right. And those are called the cash outflow requirements of the escrow, totaling 7,629,725. Now, the interest payments below that date disappear because the bonds have been called in on May 1 of 2023. So on May 1, 2023, the escrow would also cover calling in the principal amount of 7,700,000. So the total debt payments either covered by the escrow until the call date or disappeared because the bonds have been called in early. That's the debt payments being replaced, total 8,540,763. Now, if we move on to the next page, it's the bond sizing schedule. And this is just an estimate. So we're targeting having a competitive bid bond sale in April with the bond delivery in May of '21. And depending on how the bonds are bid, whichever bank or financial institution that bids with lowest interest rate would be awarded the bond issue. And depending on how they bid, we would size the bonds accordingly. And the biggest determinant of the principal amount for the new refunding bonds are the treasury costs of the new, of the escrow. So the cost of the treasuries that go into the escrow. The cash flow of the escrow was about 7,630,000. And we're estimating the cost of the treasuries are about 7,608,000. So we're projecting about 22,000 of interest earnings on the treasuries in the escrow account. That's why the costs of the treasuries are about 22,000 less than the cash outflow requirements of the escrow. And the escrow will also cover the issuance costs of the refinancing. So we estimate the principal amount to be 7,730,000 on the refunding. And if we move on to the next page, it gets more exciting as I move on, I promise. The, this is, this is the savings page. And on the left side, we have the estimated bond payments for the refunding. And the total bond payments for the refunding are estimated to be 8,247,000. And that's compared to the bond payments being replaced of 8,540,000. And so the difference is on the, further to the right. And that's estimated to be 293,619, which is a present value of 282,353. And as a percentage of refunded principal, that, that's at 3.99%. So pretty healthy level of savings. Another way to look at it is we're, we're essentially replacing bonds that have a true interest cost of 4.02% with new bonds. And in the current market, estimated to have a true interest cost of 1.45%. So a big difference in our interest costs. And on the next page, by the way, that savings is not of issuance costs. On the next page, we have the millage benefit. And we could structure the refunding to have more millage savings start in a later year if. And, but in this example, the estimated millage savings, starting with the 2021 levy, is .1 mil. So there's the benefit to, to the, to the community. I will add that these bonds will be taxable because it, if it occurs in '21, because that's more than 90 days before the call date. It is possible for the district to refinance the bonds later, like in 2022 or even 2023. However, if the district were to refinance the bonds later, then you're assuming interest rate risk. But if your refunding were to be later and interest rates did not move that much, you could have more savings. So sometimes we go through this exercise called the break even analysis to find out how much higher would interest rates have to go if the district were to wait a year in order to get the same level of savings that we have projected here? And I estimate that to be .38%. That means that you could have more savings and have the refinancing in 2022 at higher savings, as long as interest rates don't increase by more than an estimate of .38%. However, I believe there, there is a possibility rates could change by more than that much. In the, in the past six months, they've moved by about 30 basis points. And in the past year, they've moved by about 1%. So that, that just is a good indicator of the, the interest rate changes over time and why it may be a good idea to refinance the, the bonds in 2021. On the next page, we do have historical 10-year treasury yields. And since these are taxable bonds, we use the 10-year treasury as an indicator on, on how these interest rates change. And, and we see that we're near historical rates on, you see from the top part of the chart. But the lower part of the chart is interest rates from October 2019 through November. And we do see that interest rates have come up a little bit since, since July of this year. So we're hoping rates remain fairly low. And as we move through the process, we're going to be updating, updating the analysis and sharing that information with Superintendent Wamsley and Tammy. So some of the next steps are, we have an authorizing resolution being presented before the board this evening. And that is a prerequisite to proceed with the refunding as a competitive bid sale. And then some of the next steps are, we prepare an official statement and get a credit rating, and we schedule a sale date to occur in April. And we'll be updating the analysis and hopefully rates will remain fairly low and we'll have a healthy amount of savings. So I think that, that just about covers it. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
We do have Matt Heiser here, who's from Trune Law. He prepared the, the resolution and the documents. So Matt, would you just kind of go over what the documents are that there are before them tonight? So that they have an understanding upon their approval, what, what it means?
Sure, thanks, Brian. Good evening, everyone. As Brian mentioned, my name's Matt Heiser. I'm a finance attorney at Trune Law Firm. Recently assisted the school district with the sale of its building and site bond issue. So the purpose of the resolution that you have before you tonight, the title of which is, just so that you can identify it, at the very top of the first page, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance and Delegating the Sale of Richmond Community Schools 2021 Refunding Bonds. So that is the document that I'm referring to. And if you look at the first page of the document, you'll see that in item two, it identifies that 2013 school building and site bond issue that RJ was referring to. This would be the bond issue that would make financial sense right now to refinance, as RJ had described. It identifies the maturities that would be refinanced, which are the 2024 through 2028 maturities. So what the, what the resolution does, if you move down the first page to the now there four provisions, in item one, it's, yeah, thank you, Brian. Yeah, so in item one, it's just designating that these 2021 refunding bonds could be sold by the district to refinance that outstanding 2013 transaction. And it authorizes both Brian and Tammy to, to move forward with the sale so long as the, the bonds, these refunding bonds, the 2021 refunding bonds, can be sold within the parameters that are provided in this resolution. And the, and the key parameters are provided in paragraph 17 of the resolution, which is on page five. If you wouldn't mind advancing to that, Brian? Great, thank you. So in order for Brian or Tammy to approve the sale of the bonds after interest rates bids are received, the bids would have to be low enough that the average true interest rate on, on the new bonds wouldn't exceed 2%. So would have to be, the bonds would have to be sold at very low interest rates not to exceed 2% on the average true interest rate. And then most importantly, the present value savings from the refunding can't be less than 2% of the prior amount of the prior bond issue. And you saw in RJ's analysis, right now they're estimating that that, that percentage would actually be in excess of 3%. And then finally, in item C, under paragraph 17, the, Brian or Tammy could sell the bonds without receiving the express written recommendation from PFM as the school district's financial advisor. And then, so that's really the gist of it. This authorizes the, the school district to move forward with the transaction. We would assist the district in preparing the preliminary official statement, which describes the refunding bonds and provides financial and demographic information about the school district, just like we did with the school district's recent school building and site bond issue. So this would authorize all of those things to happen. But the bonds couldn't be sold unless they could be sold consistent with those parameters described in paragraph 17 and, you know, and the other provisions. uh, they could be sold, uh, consistent with those parameters, uh, described in paragraph seventeen and, you know, and the other provisions of the resolution. So with that is, oh, and then finally, the exhibits to the resolution are, are simply uh, forms of documents that would be completed should the bonds be sold, just like we had with the building and site uh, bond authorizing resolution. Uh, so exhibit A is the form of the bond itself. So if, if the bonds are able to be sold within the parameters provided, uh, we would complete this exhibit A. Exhibit B is the notice of sale that's published, uh, to invite securities firms to submit interest rate bids on the bonds. Is the case that would be filed with the Department of Treasury should the bonds be sold. So again, those exhibits are just forms, uh, that would be, that the board is approving, uh, in the event that the bonds are sold. Uh, so with that, does anyone have any questions on the resolution?
Anybody? Okay.
The bottom line, we walk away from this is we have an opportunity to save our taxpayers, um, money.
Correct. Very good, very good stuff. Thank you, Mr. Notton and Mr. Heiser. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on to our presentation, which is the extended COVID nineteen learning plan.
Okay, this is something that's done every, every month, uh, as required by law under section ninety eight of the revised school code. Uh, there are three components, um, to this plan, uh, or that must be discussed with the public. Uh, one is the review of the two-way communication rates, uh, the instructional delivery and an opportunity for public comment. So the instructional delivery, we currently are a hundred percent virtual. Headed through, uh, January eighth with the return to in-person learning on January eleventh, which is, um, count the number of days, there's four, uh, ten, eleven days, excuse me, that we have left of virtual. The review of the two-way communication, I'm going to share my screen to show you what the current rates are as of, um. So you'll see in here in the plan that's dated for this, this fourteenth, uh, that we are virtual as well as, um, we are anticipating a return to learning on Monday, January eleventh.
Mr. Wamsley, I'm gonna interrupt you again. I'm sorry, but we've got and someone else in the audience there that's not muted, that's giving us some background noise. LG something, LG Stilo six.
I'm gonna, um.
In the middle of my screen, thank you. It's just, it's just really hard, at least for me, I'm having problems hearing. I don't know about anybody else.
There it is, it's muted, okay.
All right, thank you. Sorry.
That's right. So it's broken up by the preschool, Lee Elementary School, Middle School. Again, it's the same type of virtual learning that you had approved at the last board meeting. Um, the public comment was added from the last board meeting to the parents that spoke. And finally, we look at the two-way communication rate. I'm going to scroll down to the December section because this is all just a running total of what's previously been there. This is what was presented in November. The December rates, um, we're looking at sixteen through the twentieth. You can see on district, our district average is ninety eight point three four. The week of the twenty third, which is two days of instruction, our, our attendance rate was ninety seven point seven five. Uh, it was actually two half days of instruction. The week after Thanksgiving, uh, we maintain a ninety eight point seven eight. Again, the daily attendance, just as I talked to you last time, um, two present codes must appear within a student's, uh, attendance within a week's period. Um, and as long as they have two, um, they're considered as meeting the minimum requirements as identified by the state. So if I have a student that has six hours, uh, a day at the high school over five days, there's thirty possible present codes. They have to have at least two of them to count. Uh, and elementary does half days. Well, it's twice the day times five is ten, so they have to have at least two of them. And when you go into through last week, you can see our, uh, we had probably one of the highest percentages we had, uh, last week. So, um, from the previous meeting, I, I projected it to be a little lower being virtual. Um, we actually have been maintaining and keeping a very high, uh, high, um, attendance rate. With that, when we talk about the instructional delivery, uh, my recommendation to the board would be to continue with an anticipated return date on January eleventh. Um, the administrative team and I have had a, a lot of conversations as we've been monitoring the, the virtual learning. Um, I've been in over sixty classrooms myself, visiting from a student perspective and understanding. Uh, equates to about, um, a little over twelve hundred, almost thirteen hundred students that, that I was witness. Administrators have been in classes. I don't think anybody disagrees, virtual learning is more challenging. Um, however, given the situation, uh, I think it would position the dis- district very well to maintain our current program. Um, and, and return to, to in-person learning on January eleventh. Um, I have received multiple emails, um, probably at least, uh, ten of them from various parents, um, who are, um, I don't, pleading is the only word that's coming to head, but I don't know if that's the right word about returning students to in-person learning. Um, I've also received emails from parents, uh, wishing students to be out as long as they can, uh, for safety pos- for, for the safety of students and staff uh, in a virtual setting. Um, this has not been an easy decision, as you guys know, having deliberated this and, and making some of the hard decisions. Um, but I think as a district, going through what we've done in the last couple of weeks, um, and getting staff out of a quarantine situation to be able to teach. Um, I still am reporting to fa- families as we know about it, um, because it, uh, COVID, positive COVID cases, as well as people being quarantined, is still happening, it's just to a lesser extent. Uh, one of the things that I am now part of, along with the superintendents, uh, we meet weekly, uh, with a, a group called Opportunity Labs. They are a nonpartisan, uh, group that provides, uh, information and guidance. They're currently actually providing guidance to, um, I believe the Trump administration, and they are working with the, the incoming Biden administration um, regarding particularly schools and trends they're seeing across the nation. The challenge that, that, that they've identified is it's not the schools are spreaders. In fact, it's showing that schools are not spreaders. It's more of a staffing issue, uh, and staffing, the adults, um, uh, being in contact and having to quarantine. So, um, it's our hope as we move forward that, that, that occurs less so that we can continue the, um, uh, in-person learning on January eleventh. So tonight, um, you have, you have the option of adjusting the plan. Um, my recommendation would be, continue what you approved on January twenty, excuse me, on February, November twenty third, uh, to return for in-person learning on January eleventh. Um, after public comment, if the board, uh, wants to amend the plan, I just need to know so we can move forward. Otherwise, later in the, I, action items would be, uh, an approval to continue the plan as is. Um, with that, I am done with my presentation. If you wanted to open it up for public comment.
Can I just ask a question first?
Absolutely.
Explain to me again what this opportunity labs, what's their point?
Opportunity lab is they are.
What's the?
If you go to COVID Act now, it is a website that, that they're collecting data and they're, they're looking at the data from a nonpartisan political lens. And with, uh, it is a founding, uh, one of the founding members is, uh, a, a doctor, a scientist. Um, there's several members who are, uh, looking and analyzing data and giving recommendations to states, including, um, uh, the state of Michigan, several areas in New York regarding how to respond to the COVID nineteen. Um, our group, uh, the superintendent group is looking at it from the lens of what do we do with schools? We know as a collective group, um, that schools, um, are not, are, are not typically spreaders. Now, there are exceptions with everything. Um, but it's regarding the, the adults or the age group and they, every week they provide a statistical information about what's happening, what are the trends from over the last week by age group, by areas of the country. Um, part of it, they talk about hospitalization rates and ICU bed availability, which are some metrics on, on how they uh, measure the, the status of the virus. So, um, it's just another piece of information. We still meet with the health department on, on Wednesdays in McComb, um, as all, all the districts are, are pretty much, um, who are virtual, who want to be in person, uh, facing the same issues that, that we face. They got us to be a virtual district in terms of a staffing issue. Um, we're all facing the same issues regarding substitutes and, and people being able to fill in when we do have a situation. Um, there are some legislative, uh, bills that have been introduced to help districts that allow any, um, any school employee to be a substitute, you could redeploy and move them into a, a substitute position without having the, the current substitute credentials. Um, that has not yet been passed, so we will, um, you know, we'll, we'll be watching that, but it's just another piece of data to help us make some informed decisions on how we need to go uh, or where we need to go. It does break it down by counties in, in, uh, in the analysis and you can compare what our health department is reporting compared to this, uh, independent group, um, that's really has no political motives in anything.
Okay, okay, thanks. Uh, okay, we're going to open it up. This is the portion of our meeting for public comment, which is specific to our, to the COVID return to learning plan. So if we have anybody out in the audience who would like to ask a question or make a comment, um, we just ask you to identify yourself so that we know who it is that we're speaking to. Is there anyone out in the viewing audience who would like to make a comment or ask a question?
Believe everybody should have the ability to unmute themselves.
Um, I don't see anybody.
I don't see anybody waving their hand either.
Nope. Okay. Okay, um, so then, yeah, as a board, Brian, you just want to comment from us whether we want to continue moving on with how we are, and if we will, then we'll do that later on in the meeting, or if there's anybody that has.
I, I have a comment. Sorry, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, me.
Perfect. Hi.
Are you? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, I.
That's okay.
An interesting thing to do this on your cell phone and figure out all the logistics of this. It feels so awkward. Um, my name is Cory Beach. Um, I am a, uh, Chesterfield resident and I, um, school of choice into the district this year. And then I have been very impressed with how Richmond has handled, um, from day one, the in-person. And I have two little ones in the GSRP program and one second grader. And I just would request that the, the district would look at, um, at least bringing back the, the elementary, the Will, um, Willie Elementary Building as soon as possible and um, continuing to provide the, the focus of the sub-coverage in that building. I know that, um, middle and high school, it's going to be best for those students to be and have the in-person option as well. Um, but just the technology, um, and the, the delivery model, I think for the littlest learners is much harder to do virtually. So I would just request that the board looks at that, um, to support bringing back the, the littlest ones, um, as soon as possible and then continuing to support the coverage, um, in that building.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Um, Mr. Wamsley, do you want to make any response to that?
Yeah, um, the first of all, we are continuing the, uh, substitute coverage. Uh, we actually have them currently working right now, uh, as we have some staff who may not be able to do virtual um, for a variety of reasons. So we continued these substitutes. Our tentative date with through them is January, I think it's twenty ninth, it is a Friday, uh, might be thirtieth. With the intent that i- as long as we need them, we're going to continue them through the year. Um, they have played a crucial role in our success for in-person. Uh, we have, while our, our COVID building aids have been, uh, on pause since, uh, the, the November, um, um, virtual start date, um, we did, uh, or I did send them a letter saying that our intent is to bring them back when we are in person and to plan on January eleventh to come back. You know, we, we, so that, as far as that support, our plan is to continue, uh, moving forward with that and, uh, providing that support to get us through particularly this school year. Um, all indications, we, you know, with the vaccination, it indicates that, you know, from the, the local, the, the, the the non-essential worker group is probably not going to get it till the spring, early, you know, summer at, at that, at the earliest. And, and so we're still talking a while before we actually see any, uh, impact on the vaccination directly here in the school. Um, regarding coming back early, the administrative team and I had, have talked about that. We talked about, um, um, looking at the, the, the pluses and minuses of, of possibly phasing in elementary prior to the eleventh, such as the week we got back. Um, some of the challenges is that we would see, and it would be, uh, relatively short notice for parents would be, um, the intent on that, that, that fourth and fifth, really that Monday, Tuesday, and I'll even go into Wednesday, would we see where are we with the staffing, uh, of our buildings, um, over the Christmas holiday, over the New Year's holiday? Um, you know, we're not naive. People are going to get together. They did it at, at Thanksgiving. And if you look at about two weeks later, we had a, a little uptick in, in just, um, direct people who were still working here. Um, we anticipate that to happen. I hope it doesn't, but I'm anticipating it. If that were to happen, it gives us a sense of, okay, can we staff the buildings come January eleventh, which is our, our intent. Uh, we talked about possibly, could we bring elementary back, um, or K five back? Um, where they're more of a self-contained classroom, um, beginning that Thursday or Friday of the first week after spring break, or after spring break, after Christmas break or, or holiday break. Um, the, the, the downside on it is Monday and Tuesday, we're going to know whether we're going to be able to staff because, uh, or we'll have a good idea, I shouldn't say guaranteed, but a decent idea of whether we're going to be able to staff our building. And it would be a very short notice that we would turn around to parents, um, and allow, and many parents have already set, um, uh, us, uh, babysitting or arrangements because they knew we were out through the, through, through the eleventh. Um, you know, we looked at various subgroups because we are, we are concerned collectively with not only all kids, but our at-risk populations who are struggling virtually, um, who, who need that in-person, uh, conversation and that instruction, that more direct instruction. Um, we're monitoring the, um, at the high school and middle school rates, or the high school rate particularly, the failure rate of students, um, being in virtual, um, the follow-up with, with courses. It's been a conversation that, that there's a concern among the teaching staff. Um, but I think if, if the board was going to consider anything, um, I would consider it to be give us the Monday, Tuesday, maybe even Wednesday be the communication to parents. And if you're going to start phasing people back early, it wouldn't be until Thursday or Friday of that, of that week. Or just continue as is, and we plan on bringing everybody back on the, um, uh, the eleventh. In our district, we have many families that have multiple students where the older student watches the younger students. So, um, you know, we've got to make sure that, um, the older student is home when the understudent is leaving or coming home from school. Um, you know, from a parent perspective, they're, they're going to have to manage that aspect too, if we, um, split the, split the district in terms of half being in-person, half being virtual until we all become virtual. Again, this is assuming that the, the health department and the governor continue, um, or discontinue, I should say, the prohibition of ninth through to eleventh, ninth through twelfth graders from being in person. Um, that, that's our hope that it allows us to have high school kids. But minimally, I do agree with, uh, Mrs. Beach regarding it is important for our younger kids. Um, they are the ones, um, though statistically on, on our exposure rate, they're probably one of the highest groups that's been exposed. Um, when you look at the numbers in our district, but statistically, they are the ones that are least likely to, um, catch the virus, show symptoms of the catch the virus, show symptoms of the virus. They're more likely to be asymptomatic, uh, according to not only the, the Health Department, but also this, uh, Opportunity, um, Opportunity Labs, which is the other group that, that's, um, kind of verifying that data. So. No, that was a long answer to the question, but, um, I, I mean, it's, it's, uh, half a dozen, six and other type of eggs, uh, you know, are we, do we bring them back, uh, and coordinate that earlier? And if you do, um, like I said, we, we do need time to react or respond as an organization to get people ready for in-person learning. I, I'm concerned that if we bring half of them back, um, you know, we just got to get the message out there to parents. And even though we've done School Messenger and, um, we've actually used, used Facebook in some ways to communicate it, we still get calls of people not knowing, um, you know, certain things that happened in the district for whatever reason.
So are you saying then, um, that you've had conversations about bringing some portion of the lower levels, whether it's just Lee or including the fourth and fifth grade, back, back early because what you're, what you're presenting to us tonight is that we would keep going with how we are with the idea we're coming back on the 11th. So is that, is that still what you're asking of us, or are you saying there's a possibility come January 4th or 5th, like you said, that we, we might be bringing the younger kids back early?
My, my recommendation to the board is we continue and bring back the kids on January 11th. However, if the board feels strongly, I would ask that you give us time to respond after the first of the year, such as if you ought to bring back K-3 on, um, you know, be, you know, that, that January 4th, 6th, 6th, 7th, 7th and 8th, or K-5. Um, those are self-contained classrooms. That's much easier to manage because we're going to have to get back into the swing of things of, of temperature checking and cleaning between classrooms and so forth, which we have the, the support staff to do that. But again, if there, if there's a desire for the board, um, I would ask that you not do it on the 4th. Give us some time during the week to respond to see how many staff, um, if any, were affected over the holiday break. Because we're going to have two, almost two holidays where, where, where staff, even, even if they're, with their just immediate family, um, the other members of their immediate family may have been exposed and bring it into their household and it gives us a sense. Like I said, about two weeks after Thanksgiving, you saw a couple of the letters come out from my office indicating that we had staff members that were affected. And again, it, it's, our staff is, if, if they're not showing symptom, we can, they can quarantine. We have the ability to still have them teach from home with kids in the classroom. It's just the kids in the classroom. We only have so many people that can cover classes, which are those substitutes. And once we hit five, we're out of people unless we're pulling other resources and not offering them. Like if we're pulling resource room or, or TC or specials and not offering those specials.
Okay. So you, you and the administrators are recommending that we, for the board, that for our discussion tonight, to continue as we are and to bring everyone back on the 11th. And that's, that's still depending too. I mean, that could be, um, depending on what happens, but you're, even though you're talking all about this, the recommendation for tonight is to continue.
That is my, that is our, my recommendation in the.
Okay. So then, okay. So then I guess what needs to be discussed amongst the board members, whoever, um, has a comment that this is what the, what the recommendation from the superintendent, the administration is that we keep our, um, keep our plan what it is with everyone to return on the 11th. So is there any discussion? Any comments? Anybody that wants to do something different than that?
I would love to see him in class, but if for two days or whatever, it doesn't make sense to do that. Pull him in on Wednesday or Thursday if we're already planning on coming back the next Monday. But I mean, I would love to see our young kids back in school as soon as we possibly can.
I'm on Kyle's boat. I agree. Like what's, it's a waste of two days as much as I see my son struggling and having to take a mental health day last week. It's just, what's two days really, like to interrupt everybody's schedule? So I think the 11th, as much as it's needed to go back earlier is probably an ideal date.
Angela, I saw you shaking your head, no. You were no, you wanted to stay how we are. Is that what you were shaking?
Yes, I agree. I think we should stay how we are for now. I wish it could be sooner, as Kyle said as well. And I do agree that hopefully after the January 11th, it is ideal for us if the high school does stay shut down according to state. We plan on at least bringing back our K through three, however, I guess it would be, our elementary, like she said, the Lee Elementary. Would that?
K-8 actually. I mean, if it stays where the high school stays out.
Unless there's something that, that prevents us, my intent is if high school's still out, we're at least bringing back K-8. Now, our, our, our collective group, we want kids in school. I don't have anybody who's advocating kids need to be out. It's more of a logistical staffing and, where we are now, again, come January, if we're, if we are here, January 4th, and the high school can't come back, I would recommend we still bring back K-8.
Right. Great.
Pre-K.
Quarantine protocol, um, in the near future, like I know currently, what is it, 10 to 15 days? Could that be possibly reduced?
The quarantine, the quarantine guidelines have, have evolved and changed based on the CDC. The problem that we have is our legislators passed a law back in August, PA 238, which defines by law what happens when someone tests positive and exposed, which if I'm following guidance from the CDC, which has changed, I'm actually violating the law that our legislators passed. Rather than pass a law that said based on guidance and leave it open-ended as we learn more about this virus and how it interacts and so forth, they actually defined it. So, um, I'm hoping that law, number one, that law changes because we could, we could have people back sooner based on the guidance of the CDC. I'm right there with you in terms of as we know more, we know how this virus interacts of, and the, 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 I can admit the hot period, the exposure period that we got to really watch. You know, we've, we've got people who, um, have been airing quarantine that we'd like to get them back and, and we just can't at the moment. So.
And you're saying that's because of our state law, not because of?
PA 238, um, and I just got a, a little note here done. It says, it talks about 14 days of exposure and, and there's some CDC guidance that changes that, um, to a lower number. That's the concern.
Thank you.
So which one are we doing? The lower number? Are we changing?
Right now, we're following the law.
14 days.
Gotcha.
Okay. So we're good that we're going to continue as we are, correct? Everyone was agreement with that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now we are going to move on to our regular public comment. There's the portion of our meeting where if there's anyone who would like to address the board, they can do so. Uh, you have three minutes to speak. While it is not a question and answer period, if you do have a question that needs answered, you can email your name and phone number to me at m teltow@richmondgot.k12.mi.us and someone will get back with you. Um, is there anyone out in the audience who would like to address the board? Oh, that looks like a no. Okay. And move on to superintendent legislative update, Mr. Wamsley.
Um, I'm going to start with some legislative update. Um, as we all know, the governor and Michigan Department of Health and Human Service extended the high school prohibition through, uh, December 20th. Um, we'll be watching closely where that goes the remaining days before the holidays as well as after. It was also announced and actually I believe today was the first day, many of them got vaccinated regarding the, the vaccine. Um, in the state of Michigan, um, K-12 school and childcare staff are considered H1B in the priority. Um, what that means, we, we don't really know exactly the requirements of, of staff and childcare, um, if, if they are, if there is any requirements to, to get the, the vaccine, but as information is, um, presented and we know more, um, obviously I will communicate that with the board as well as staff members. Um, there's a couple of bills, um, that are in the process. Uh, one of the things though that may hold up some bills, usually this is a time for lame duck, which is usually when outgoing legislators, um, try to get any pet projects that they may have wanting to get it passed or doing things often we, as we've seen in years past, that are truly not for the best interest of education, bills get rushed through. Third grade reading was one of those, um, right to work legislation, et cetera. As of now, the, uh, Senate or to the, the House has canceled sessions. They're both the House and Senate. Official last day is supposed to be December 17th, which is this Thursday. The House has canceled sessions, which is because of a, um, exposure to COVID or, or, and, and, uh, someone who's tested positive. Why I asked, why I bring this up is because there is a, um, bill that was passed that allowed, uh, schools and cities to do remote meetings through December 31st. There is a bill that, that is, um, that went out of the Senate and has to get approved by the House, Senate Bill 1246, that would allow virtual meetings to go through, uh, March 31st. If this bill does not get passed by both sides and signed, um, it would require us to meet in person, which would actually, um, because violate the, the Health Department's guideline, um, in January. So just keep that on your radar, uh, for future. So I'll be watching this one. There is a, there is every hope that the House may come back between Christmas and New Year's, um, to pass certain legislation, and, and ultimately get it approved. House Bill 4691 is another, or excuse me, 4694 is another one that we are watching. Um, it allows public school employees who have retired to allow them to come back and work, uh, on the critical shortage capacity and not have any, uh, impact to their retirement. Currently, when you retire in, from the Michigan retirement system, there's a cap on what you can make. This would basically eliminate the cap and allow retirees to come back and work as well as, um, for a district as well as collect their retirement pension. The law allows it, the, the expectation of the law would be in effect till 2025. There's some other minor laws that are out there that I don't know where they're going to end up by the end of the session. House Bill 5855, uh, revises the school code regarding mandatory, uh, sentences for parents and, or other persons, uh, regarding, uh, compulsory education and truancy. Senate Bill, um, 1246 is the, um, they allow to do virtual, uh, learning. So that's really it on the legislative front. Um, there's a couple, uh, memos that the Department of Education, uh, they are petitioning the US Department of Education to waive the spring state assessments, um, due to, uh, most districts, um, really being virtual and the situation we had for the 2021 school year, um, that we are watching to see if there's a requirement to do the, the M-step testing, um, as well as the alternative assessment for those, um, that qualify. As far as a district update, uh, this week and I, um, the Richmond Middle School Student Council Advisor, Jamie Clausen and Christine, uh, Krista McLeod, uh, along with the assistants of Mr. Bartels and his family, um, social worker Jolene, uh, Wachinski, bus driver Monica Lepiccolo, um, and Santa Claus had a stuff a bus, uh, canned food drive, uh, to help support the Lions who make baskets for needy families in our, in our, in our community. Normally this is done during the school month, November, December, kids bring in cans. They, they have it on display in the school, um, with, but being virtually, um, it was a little, um, more challenging. So Mrs. Clausen came up with this idea. For the first time, we do it, we did this, uh, it was, it was a great success. It was a great, uh, five hours. They spent out there meeting, uh, members of the community who are not only Richmond, uh, families, but others. Uh, we filled every seat on the bus with canned food, um, and brought it to the Richmond Lennox EMS where they sorted it, uh, the Lions Club and they're preparing it for distribution. So it was a great event. I believe they had about a hundred and $50 or so in donations too. Just a reminder, our meal deliveries are still on Tuesdays and Fridays. Um, the drop-off locations and times we adjusted last week, um, are on the website. Uh, we will deliver meals tomorrow, this coming Friday, the 18th, Tuesday, the 22nd, and we will restart on January 5th and the, uh, 8th. We'll be providing many meals on that January 22nd date to give as many meals as were, were allowed. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, Bob Becker, who is the owner of NT Fabrication. Uh, earlier in the year, we had bought face shields from, uh, him to, to get us going in the year. Uh, he contacted me and he donated to the district 5,000 face shields, um, for us to continue in-person learning.
That's fabulous.
It's been a, a, a pleasure of working with these individuals and he's been extremely supportive of, of school districts. Uh, just a couple of things I want to bring to your attention. The district was awarded a childcare grant from the Childcare Relief Fund. This grant totaled over $50,000. Um, any parent who utilizes childcare in September receives a $200 credit on their childcare bill as part of this grant to offset costs. The remaining dollars will also offset their operating costs for the childcare program. So, um, you know, any, any, any loss of revenue will help continue that childcare program. So that's exciting for the district. Uh, we also submitted a grant for the MI Connect program, which would re, uh, receive about $25, uh, per electronic device that we purchased. It's a rebate. Uh, we should know if we got that grant soon, it would equate to about $8,700 in revenue. Uh, we also, in the Michigan MI, uh, MI Connect program, the connectivity grant, um, the allocation that we were awarded was 20,000, uh, just under $21,000. So we are, um, excited as help with the, um, hotspots and the, the monthly fees that we pay for those hotspots, et cetera. The business office and I and any administrator who has a, has a handle in this, we've been really looking for as many grants as possible to help set, offset our costs this year. Uh, we now qualify for what's called the 10 cents a meal grant. Uh, basically we get an extra 10 cents for a meal that we serve, uh, plus $2,000. So that's again additional revenue that's coming into the district to help offset our costs, um, and so forth. Um, today, uh, tuition-based preschool students, parents should have received a letter from me. Uh, if you haven't checked your spam, in case it went there, um, but the letter, um, offered to three-year-old preschool students, um, who go attend school three days a week, would receive $118.80 credit for the program for the lost instructional time that they had paid for in their original tuition. Four-year-old, five-day-a-week, half-day program preschool students would receive 178.74 cents, uh, credit. And those that attend the five-day full-day program would receive a $482 credit towards their bill, which would show up in their, either December or January bill coming up. And finally, uh, um, the last bit of news, um, I shared with, with the board and, and the organization. Um, as a collective organization, our community needs to be extremely proud of what we've done. In a recent article by Chalk Beats Detroit, which looked at, um, the enrollment of all the, the, the fall enrollment of all schools across the state. Um, the title of the article was where did, uh, Michigan's enrollment fell by 53,200 students? Where did they all go? And they ranked all the school districts with, starting with those that lost the most students and those that, uh, didn't. Um, Richmond is the only McComb County school and both, um, public school, excuse me, that actually, public non-charter school, let me put it that way, that actually gained students for over last year. That actually, public non-charter school, let me put it that way, that actually gained students for over last year. And I think that's a collective effort of, I I know it's a collective effort of not only the staff in our district, the administrative team. The board, all of us working together for one common purpose of how do we, how do we educate students in this pandemic? So. Very proud of that. That's that's an accomplishment in a in a global pandemic. And and finally, I just I'll leave with this. Twenty twenty has been a year like no other. Many heartaches, hardship hardships, sacrifices, but we still have much to celebrate and be thankful for. So. On behalf of my family, to everybody in the organization, of the board and the community. I want to wish you a happy holiday and a happy new year as this will be, I believe, our last board meeting, hopefully our last boarding. Before the end of the the school year. So. I think it's going to be a well-deserved break for everybody to kind of reset and start the new year off right. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Next is our items of interest from members of the board. I'm going to start. This evening, we have two of our board members who are leaving us after fulfilling. Their term and their obligation to Richmond Schools. And we want to just take a moment to honor them and thank them for their time spent with us on the board. First, we have Sherry Zubey and Sherry has been with us for two years. And she's leaving us and we want to take a moment to thank her. And Mr. Wamsley is holding up when board members leave the board after fulfilling their obligation. We. Have for the last, I don't know how many years, given a memento and it is a bell. That Mr. Wamsley is holding up that if you want to read, Mr. Wamsley, what it says.
It says, Sherry Zubey, Richmond Community Schools Board of Education, two years of service. So thank you very much. Sherry, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Sherry, I wasn't sure we were going to be able to get the. Bell done in time, but it did get here. So if you want to stop up to Mr. Wamsley's office and pick it up. But thank you. Your your time was short. Could have been longer. You could have worked with us a little bit longer, but the work that you did here, we're grateful for. You're muted, but would you like to say anything?
Yes, sorry. I did say thank you for the bell. Thank you. Not really. I'm, I say very little. So just thank you for everything. I did enjoy my time. That's about all. Was nice working with everybody.
I miss you, Sherry.
Thank you.
Okay, and we also have Chris Furtah, who's leaving us. After serving six years on the board and. Chris had the opportunity as well for a bell for her service, but she opted instead to make the donation. And the cost of the belt to the Richmond Education Foundation, which she has been a part of. The last two years, I think, Chris, you've been on the foundation. So as a foundation board member, we thank her for that. Chris started out on the board six years ago, was a little rocky when she first got here. There, you know, that good old social media did some things and. Caused there to be a little bit of tension when she got on, but she persevered and. Worked really hard and did a lot of good while she was here on the board. Her voice has been strong. And we appreciate her and myself, Chris, we have formed a friendship and I know. Our friendship will stay long after you leave the board, but thank you for your work. As well for what you've done for Richmond Schools and the Board of Education.
Thank you. I have had a great six years. It's been a lot of fun and that's all I have to say. Other than thank you to all the my fellow board members through the years. I know there's been several of them. Thanks to Mr. Wamsley for always having an open door and for your leadership, Margaret, as president. So I appreciate that immensely. I hope the new board. Respects the talents of the existing board members and continues to journey on and make the district a better place. I feel like it's been a better place in the last six years, continues to improve and I hope that it it keeps that trajectory. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. It's been a pleasure.
And you'll see their smiles will get bigger as the meeting gets closer to the end. We'll just say that. And I just wanted to also say I dropped off stuff for the bus and kudos. To Santa Claus and Ms. Wachinski and Monica, the bus driver and everyone that was out there. It was pouring down rain. When I dropped my stuff off and. That is just great that the bus was filled like that. It just shows. How great our community is and how giving they are. Also, as I've talked previous years, there is a small group of us. Out in the community who host a fundraiser every year for Sandy's kids. Which is run by Nancy Laratanda and our social work staff and it is. Where items are purchased for needy families of our students in Richmond. And we usually have a a big, big fundraiser and weren't able to. Have it like we normally do because of the COVID problems. So we did something new. We did a virtual fundraiser and I want to thank Brian. Some of my fellow board members for your donations or you purchase tickets to try to win items. Staff members that purchased, but we raised two thousand and ten dollars on Saturday, which is huge. And it makes me very proud that. A small group of people with an idea seven years ago that it just keeps getting bigger and better every year. So to everybody out there. Who bought tickets to try to win some of our raffle items, thank you and Richmond's families, thank you as well. Does anybody else have anything they would like to share?
Wishing everybody is safe and very Merry Christmas. You deserve a break after after all the work you've put in. Well, heck, going all the way back to March. So hopefully you can enjoy some time with your family and be safe and. Just unwind a little.
Yes, hear, hear. Okay, we are going to move on to our action items. And the first one is the approval of the amendment to. Or the confirmation of the extended COVID nineteen learning plan. Chris, there's a sample resolution.
My motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent is presented in the attached documentation and approve the confirmation of the extended COVID nineteen. Learning plan for the twenty twenty one school year as it was originally approved and amended on November ninth and November twenty third. To include a revised school calendar and virtual learning schedule and presented in the attached documentation. The rejected return to in-person learning would be Monday, January eleventh, twenty twenty one. This action confirmation of one, how instruction is to be delivered. Two, an opportunity for parents and or guardians to provide public comment on the plan and three. Weekly two-way interaction rates to date.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye? Post. Motion carries. Next, approval of the bond refunding resolution, the presentation we just had earlier. Sherry, there's a sample resolution.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached resolution authorizing the issuance and delegating the sale. Of Richmond Community Schools two thousand twenty one refunding bonds as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sherry.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, approval of district-wide professional development advisory committee.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the district-wide professional development advisory committee as required by section. One oh one ten of the State School Aid Act M C L three eight eight. Dot one seven zero one and appoint the members on the attached documentation. Furthermore, the board hereby delegates the superintendent to. Appoint subsequent members of the committee.
Been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mr. Wamsley, did you want to say anything?
I would. This is unique because normally we don't use student days or we haven't in the last couple of years as part of our professional development. The law does require that we can. So this year we are using one of our student days, Martin Luther King Day. As a professional development, which would count towards a hundred and eighty student days. The the committee that listed our teachers that volunteered, I put out an email to them, asked if they'd like to sit on this. Once approved, I will notify them tomorrow. Pretty much everybody who's volunteered, actually, I believe everybody who's volunteered will be on the committee. And so we will start basically the committee build as the outline or the document. Outlines, they have to create the structure for the or the framework for the November or excuse me, January professional development day. And so we'll move forward with this.
And I just want to make note publicly who who the. People are that are on this advisory committee that we are approving. They are Amy Barrett, Christie Crampton, Joe Ogilvy, Mary Holman, Miriam May, Teresa Ranger, Anne Durst. Dave Koshin, Keith Bartels, Andy Castle and Brian Wamsley.
I do have a question. I'm curious as if to, if there was anything looked into having the parent representative. Not work for the district.
Well, we looked at the the guidance on it, that it's supposed to be composed of teachers employed by the district who represent a via. Certain amount of grade levels and subject matters, including and included parents. So part of the role would be, we need to take that parent perspective. Here's my belief is the M M D is going to clarify this even more. You know, you could look at it a couple of different ways, as you did, having a parent who's not a member in the district. For our first year doing this, we want to at least get into, make sure we're compliant. But I definitely see the value of that going forward. Should we still continue using a student instructional day as a professional development day? But I definitely recognize that. I was trying to when we when we chose this group or select this group, tried to get everybody who. Volunteer who stepped up and said, I want to be part of it, to give them a role and it worked out that we were able to give all of them a role. And and help them understand, they're going to, they're all going to be playing a role of what's in the best interest of kids for our professional development. How whatever we're going to do that day, it's got to be designed so that it improves instruction in the classroom and ultimately students, student achievement.
So it doesn't have anything more specific in the law regarding what it means regarding a parent?
No, this is that what you have in your backup is exactly the memorandum received from the Department of Education. I literally copied the bullets right from that. You know, we didn't have to deal with this last year because we had a hundred and eighty student days. This year, the way the calendar fell and Labor Day being as late as it did. We we utilized Martin Luther King Day as a student day. Otherwise, students would have to go through Monday into June if follow the normal break schedule. But that notes both are great from the memorandum and from the Michigan Department of Education.
So we might not need this committee next year or.
If next year we have to, the contract, the calendar is a negotiated item. The teacher contract is up in August of twenty one. So sitting down and based on where the calendar falls, we may or may not need this if we are not using student days.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye? Post. Motion carries. Okay, now we're going to move on to. We're approving our contracts, our bond contracts. We're going to start with the contracts at Richmond High School. We had information about these previously, so. The first one is proposal two point one selective structured demolition to DKI International Inc. Sherry, there is a sample motion.
I have a question first. Is there any way that we can approve them all at one shot?
Like, no, because when we did it. We're keeping it this way because when we did it the very first time, the the last stuff that we did, we did each one individually. So we're trying to keep it so that it's. It's done the same way each time we do it.
But if we did, we could have lumped them together last time as opposed to.
Mm-hmm, we could have. But we didn't.
Districts do it a variety of different ways. It it depends on the district's preference.
Okay.
All right, I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for a proposal two point one. Selective structured demolition to DKI International Inc. For an amount not to exceed a hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorizing to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget. For allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the. Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from from the twenty twenty. School building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sherry.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, proposal three point one cast in place concrete foundations to ELS Construction Inc. Chris.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal three point one. Cast in place concrete foundations to ELS Construction Incorporated for an amount not to exceed eighty-six thousand three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve changes, change orders. On the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. The project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of the Richmond Schools, Community Schools. For which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Or.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, proposal three point two cast in place concrete flatwork to Metropolitan Concrete Corporation. Sherry.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal three point two. Cast in place concrete, flatwork to Metropolitan Concrete Corporation for an amount not to exceed two hundred and eighty-seven. Thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement. Within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy. The superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualifications of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty. School building and site bonds series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sheri?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, proposal 4.1 Masonry to Arisco Contracting Group, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 4.1 Masonry to Arisco Contracting Group, Incorporated, for the amount not to exceed $929,000. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of the bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
For.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 5.1 Structural Steel and Miscellaneous Iron to Men of Steel, Inc. Sheri?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 5.1 Structural Steel and Miscellaneous Iron to Men of Steel, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $217,800. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sheri?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries.
Mrs. Teldo?
Yes.
Just to let the board know, you basically have torn down a wall and built the addition on the high school. So it's positive. I know this is all kind of dragging, but this is the stuff that you guys are approving tonight. So it's exciting. So, sorry to interrupt. You basically tore down a wall.
And we were on a roll, Mr. Walmsley. Thank you for that.
I know it can be drag, but.
It's all right. We needed a breather.
You guys are really, you guys are really doing some remarkable things approving all these contracts. It's pretty.
That's exactly right. It's tremendously exciting. Okay, proposal 6.1 Carpentry and Millwork to Kalbaki, Inc. Chris?
All right, this one's exciting, too. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 6.1 Carpentry and Millwork to Klubaki, Incorporated, for the amount not to exceed $104,031. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 7.1 Roofing and Metal Wall Panels to Esco Roofing and Sheet Metal, Inc. Sheri?
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 7.1 Roofing and Metal Wall Panels to Esco Roofing and Sheet Metal, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $583,700. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 8.1 Hollow Metal Wood Doors, Frames, and Hardware to A&amp;C Builders Hardware, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 8.1 Hollow Metal Wood Doors, Frames, and Hardware to A&amp;C Builders Hardware, Incorporated, for an amount not to exceed $292,580. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into the contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve changes, orders on the projects that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. The project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of the Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 8.2 Glass Glazing FRP Doors and Hardware to Alcor, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 8.2 Glass Glazing FRP Doors and Hardware to Alcor, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $249,000. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 9.1 Metal Studs and Gypsum Wallboard to Acoustic Ceilings and Partitions Company, Inc.
I'm going to have to ask somebody else to do that motion.
I can do it.
Thank you.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 9.1 Metal Studs and Gypsum Wallboard to Acoustic Ceilings and Partitions Company, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $108,095. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bonds series one is available.
For.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Um, I, I'm not sure if I'm supposed to bring it up at this time, but I have a relative that works for this company, an immediate relative, so I will be abstaining on this.
Yep, that's exactly when you say it.
Thank you.
Yep, okay. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Jessica?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chris?
Abstain.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 9.2 Hard Tile to DF Corporation DBA DF Flooring Covering.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 9.2 Hard Tile to DF Corporation DBA DF Flooring Covering for an amount not to exceed $26,445. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 9.3 Acoustical Work to Acoustic Ceilings and Partitions Company, Inc.
Again, I'm going to have to ask somebody else to do this motion.
They always land on you, Chris.
I know. I don't know if I believe you now.
Yeah.
Listen, I have no idea. So it's not, I didn't do it.
I can do it. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 10.3 Metal Lockers to Steel Equipment Company for an amount not to exceed $48,948. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to.
Wait, wait.
It's wrong one.
Wrong one.
10.3?
No.
9.3.
9.3.
Whoops. Sorry, guys.
That's all right.
Okay, I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 9.3 Acoustical Work to Acoustic Ceilings and Partitions Company, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $305,907. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bonds series one is available.
For.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I again have to abstain because I have a relative who works for this company.
Thank you. Jessica?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Chris?
Abstain.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 9.4 Resilient Flooring and Carpeting to DF Corporation Doing Business as DF Flooring Covering.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 9.4 Resilient Flooring and Carpeting to DF Corporation DBA DF Flooring Covering for an amount not to exceed $419,523. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 9.5 Athletic Flooring to Kiefer Specialty Flooring, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 9.5 Athletic Flooring to Kiefer Specialty Flooring, Incorporated, for an amount not to exceed $165,270. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement with the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowance and contingency funds. The project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of the bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 9.6 Wood Stage Floor Refinishing to Foster Specialty Floors.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 9.6 Wood Stage Floor Refinishing to Foster Specialty Floors for an amount not to exceed $9,960. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Just to quickly, on this one, it is under the threshold for board approval, but because it's bond dollars, we have brought everything to the board, so you understand the total scope. I just wanted to remind the board that we did that for the elementary addition, too.
Thank you for that, Mr. Walmsley.
Little break in the action here, sorry.
Mm-hmm, you're getting good at it. Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Danielle? And I vote aye, motion carries. And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal nine point seven, painting epoxy and urethane flooring to Continental Contracting Company.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal nine point seven, painting epoxy and urethane flooring to Continental Contracting Company for the amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle. Jessica.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal ten point one, visual display surfaces to clareage products and equipment, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal ten point one. Visual display surfaces to clareage products and equipment, Inc. For an amount not to exceed three thousand six hundred and five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sherry.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal ten point two, signage to DMP Sign Company.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal ten point two. Signage to DMP Sign Company for an amount not to exceed seven thousand dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is outlined, I'm sorry, this project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualifications of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal ten point three, metal lockers to steel equipment company.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal ten point three, metal lockers to steel equipment company for an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sherry.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal ten point four, flagpoles to Rocket Enterprises, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal ten point four. Flagpoles to Rocket Enterprises Incorporated for an amount not to exceed three thousand three hundred and thirty-five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. The project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal eleven point one, food service equipment to Great Lakes Hotel Supply Company.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal eleven point one. Food service equipment to Great Lakes Hotel Supply Company for an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand one hundred and twenty-four dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the projects that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion? I'll do a roll call vote. Sherry.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal eleven point two, gymnasium equipment to C and M Associates LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal eleven point two, gymnasium equipment to C and M Associates LLC for an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twelve point one, institutional cabinet casework to FCI Group LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal twelve point one, institutional cabinet casework for to FCI Group LLC for an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sherry.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twelve point three, telescoping bleachers to InterCal LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal twelve point three, telescoping bleachers to InterCal LLC for an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand twenty-three dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement with in the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve changes or approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twenty-two point one, plumbing to Contrast Mechanical, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal twenty-two point one, plumbing to Contrast Mechanical, Inc. for an an amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-seven thousand. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and bond site bonds series one is available.
Support. Aw, look at that, Sherry. It's been moved and supported.
She, she needed a break.
Yeah, I know. That's a good one. I'll do a roll call. Jessica.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twenty-three point one, HVAC Mechanical to Conti LLC.
This one's exciting.
It is, very exciting.
Very exciting.
Exciting.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal twenty-three point one. HVAC Mechanical to Conti LLC for an amount not to exceed two million forty-one thousand six hundred and eighty dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement with in the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Excuse me, Jessica.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
Danielle. Angela.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twenty-six point one, electrical to Brenner, Brenner Contracting LLC, doing business as Brenner Electric LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal twenty-six point one. Electrical to Brenner Contracting LLC, doing business as Brenner Electrical LLC for an amount not to exceed two million three hundred thousand dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sherry.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal thirty-one, thirty-one point one, site work and site utilities to Superior Contracting Group LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal thirty-one point one. Site work and site utilities to Superior Contracting Group LLC for an amount not to exceed six hundred eighty-one thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for the which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sherry.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, proposal thirty-two point one, asphalt paving and concrete curbs to Birmingham Seal Coat, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal thirty-two point one. Asphalt paving and concrete curbs to Birmingham Seal Coat Incorporated for an amount not to exceed three hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the two thousand twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sherry.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle. Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal thirty-two point two, vinyl coated chain link fence and gates to RMD Holdings Limited, doing business as Nationwide Construction Group.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal thirty-two point two, Vinyl Coated Chain Link Fence and Gates to RMD Holdings Limited, doing business as Nationwide Construction Group for an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into the a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualifications of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle. And I vote aye, motion carries. Last one for the high school. Proposal thirty-three point one, Moving to Premier Relocations LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal thirty-three point one, Moving to Premier Relocations LLC for an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, now we're moving on to approval of contracts for the Richmond Middle School renovation and site work. Uh, proposal two point one, Selective Structured Demolition to DKI, DKI International, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal two point one. Selective Structured Demolition to DKI International Incorporated for the amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bu- bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, proposal three point one, Cast-in Place Concrete Foundations to ELS Construction, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal three point one. Cast-in Place Concrete Foundations to ELS Construction, Inc. for an amount not to exceed fifty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-two dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal three point two, Cast-in Place Concrete Flatwork to Eastside Equipment LLC, doing business as Simone Construction Services.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal three point two. Cast-in Place Concrete Flatwork to Eastside Equipment LLC, doing business as Simone Construction Services for an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualifications of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal four point one, Masonry to Arisco Contracting, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal four point one. Masonry to Arisco Contracting Group, Inc. for an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Danielle. Jessica.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal five point one, Structural Steel and Miscellaneous Steel to Zack Welding and Custom Work LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal five point one, Structural Steel and Miscellaneous Steel to Zack Welding and Custom Work LLC for an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal six point one, Carpentry and Miscellaneous Accessories to Colbacky, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal six point one, Carpentry and Miscellaneous Accessories to Colbacky, Inc. for an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, proposal seven point one, Roofing and Metal Panels to Esco Roofing and Sheet Metal, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal seven point one, Roofing and Metal Panels to Esco Roofing and Sheet Metal Incorporated for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal eight point one, Hollow Metal Wood Doors, Frames and Hardware to A&amp;C Builders Hardware, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal eight point one. Hollow Metal, Wood Doors, Frames and Hardware to A&amp;C Builders Hardware, Inc. for an amount not to exceed two hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle. Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal eight point two, Glass Glazing FRP Doors and Hardware to Alcor, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal eight point two, Glass Glazing FRP Doors and Hardware to Alcor Incorporated for an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. The project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal nine point one, Metal Studs and Gypsum Wallboard to Acoustic Ceilings and Partition Company, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal nine point one, Metal Studs and Gypsum Wallboard to Acoustic Ceilings and Partition Company, Inc. for an amount not to exceed two hundred and twenty-nine thousand twenty-five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I have to abstain from this vote. I have a relative who works for this company.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Sheri.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Chris.
Abstain.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal nine point two, Hard Tile to DF Corporation, doing business as DF Floor Covering.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal nine point two. Hard Tile to DF Corporation, doing business as DF Floor Covering for an amount not to exceed fifty-six thousand seventeen dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized by the, in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and sites bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Uh, nine, oh, is that right? Proposal nine point three, Acoustical Work to Acoustic Ceilings and Partition Company, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal nine point three. Acoustical Work to Acoustic Ceilings and Partition Company, Inc. for an amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Chris.
I have to abstain from this vote. Proposal because I have a relative who works for this company.
Okay, I will do. Roll call, Sheri.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Abstain.
And I vote yes, motion carries. Proposal nine point four resilient flooring and carpeting to Continental Interiors Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal nine point four. Resilient flooring and carpeting to Continental Interiors Incorporated for an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty nine thousand two hundred and fifty. Two hundred and fifty dollars, that's right. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project. On behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized. To approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized by the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools. For which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle. Jessica. Did you say aye, Jessica?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal nine point five athletic flooring to Kiefer Specialty Flooring Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents. For proposal nine point five athletic flooring to Kiefer Specialty Flooring Inc. For an amount not to exceed thirty four thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project. On behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized. To approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by. The Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty school. Building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal nine point seven painting epoxy in urethane flooring to Accurate Painting Company Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the course. Bid documents. For proposal nine point seven painting epoxy and the urethane flooring to Accurate Painting Company Incorporated. For an amount not to exceed one hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent. To enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project. On behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders. On the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury. And approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal ten point one visual display surfaces to Sig Jan products.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding. Bid documents for proposal ten point one visual display surfaces to Sig Jan products. For an amount not to exceed four thousand eight hundred and sixty five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project. On behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project. That are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools. For which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Point. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal ten point two signage to DMP Sign Company.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents. For proposal ten point two signage to DMP Sign Company for an amount not to exceed five thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement. Within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders. On the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty school building. And site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal ten point three metal lockers to Brainerd Enterprises Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal ten point three. Metal lockers to Brainerd Enterprises Inc. for an amount not to exceed fifty seven thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project. On behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders. On the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters. Of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the. Twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call, Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Jessica. And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal ten point four flagpoles to Rocket Enterprises Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for. Proposal ten point four flagpoles to Rocket Enterprises Incorporated for an amount not to exceed three thousand three hundred and thirty five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement. Within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions, the board purchasing policy. The superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualifications of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury. And approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty. School building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Chris.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal eleven point one food service equipment to Great Lakes Hotel Supply Company.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal eleven point one. Food service equipment to Great Lakes Hotel Supply Company. For an amount not to exceed seventy thousand two hundred and fifty one dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a. Contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized. To approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools. For which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Sheri.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal eleven point two gymnasium equipment to CNM Associates LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal eleven point two. Gymnasium equipment to CNM Associates LLC for an amount not to exceed fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy five dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement. Within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders. On the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools. For which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twelve point one institutional cabinet casework to Architect, Architectural Systems Group LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents. For proposal twelve point one institutional cabinet casework to Architectural Systems Group LLC. For an amount not to exceed seventy one thousand eight hundred dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project. That are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters. Of Richmond Community Schools for which funding. From the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Who was that?
Angela, support.
Angela, thank you. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twelve point two music and instrument casework for Arc, to Architectural Systems Group LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents. For proposal twelve point two. Music and instrument casework to Architectural Systems Group LLC for an amount not to exceed nineteen thousand two hundred dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement. Within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the bond. I'm sorry, of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders. On the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury. And approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion, hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote, Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, proposal twenty two point one plumbing to Ecker Mechanical Contractors Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal. Twenty two point one plumbing to Ecker Mechanical Contractors Inc. for an amount not to exceed one hundred and ninety five thousand three hundred dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project. On behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond. Budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which. Funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote, Sheri.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twenty three point one HVAC mechanical to Conti LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents. For proposal twenty three point one HVAC mechanical to Conti LLC for an amount not to exceed two million one hundred and thirty. Thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into. A contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders. On the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification. Bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the twenty twenty. School building and site bond series one is available.
Support. Been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Sheri.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal twenty six point one electrical to Shoreview Electric Company.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for. Proposal twenty six point one electrical to Shoreview Electric Company for an amount not to exceed one million four hundred and forty five thousand dollars. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project. That are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds. Approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for. Which funding from the twenty twenty school building and site bond series one is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call, Sheri.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Danielle.
Aye.
Angela.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal thirty one point one site work and site utilities to Superior Contracting Group LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents. For proposal thirty one point one site work and site utilities to Superior. for proposal 31.1 Site Work and Site Utilities to Superior Contracting Group LLC for an amount not to exceed $274,222. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement with this, within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. The project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bond Series One is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 32.1 Asphalt Paving and Concrete Curbs to Asphalt Specialists, Inc.
Uh, I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 32.1 Asphalt Paving and Concrete Curbs to Asphalt Specialists, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $169,000. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bond Series One is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call. Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Proposal 32.2 Vinyl Coated Chain-Link Fence and Gates to RMD Holdings Limited Doing Business as Nationwide Construction Group.
Okay, sorry, had the wrong one up. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 32.2 Vinyl Coated Chain-Link Fence and Gates to RMD Holdings Limited Doing Business as Nationwide Construction Group for an amount not to exceed $8,375. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bond Series One is available.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Last one for the middle school. Proposal 33.1 Moving to Premier Locations LLC.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 33.1 Moving to Premier Relocations LLC for an amount not to exceed $118,885. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bond Series One is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, last, the approval of the contracts for Willa Lee Elementary.
Mr. Wamsley, doesn't he have anything exciting to say?
This is, uh, this is the parking lot. This is the expanded parking lot that we went all the way out to the road, so it is a larger parking lot. And so far, you can go home and say you spent $17.8 million tonight so far.
Fabulous.
So far.
Okay, first one, proposal 3.2 Cast-in Place Concrete Flatwork to Metropolitan Concrete Corporation.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal, this is 3.2, right?
Yes, it sure is.
All right, Cast-in Place Concrete Flatwork to Metropolitan Concrete Corporation for an amount not to exceed $67,680. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualifications of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bond Series One is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next one, proposal 31.1 Site Work and Site Utilities to Cordis Brothers Trucking and Excavating, Inc. Jessica, can you help us out here?
Yes. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 31.1 Site Work and Site Utilities to Cordis Brothers Trucking and Excavating, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $474,000. Furthermore, the board authorizes a superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement with this, within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bonds Series One is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call. Jessica?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Ah, proposal 32.1 Asphalt Paving and Concrete Curbs to James P. Contracting, Inc.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 32.1 Asphalt Paving and Concrete Curbs to James P. Contracting, Incorporated for the amount not to exceed $666,885. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with the general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bond Series One is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Last one for Willa Lee. Proposal 32.2 Vinyl Coated Vinyl Coated Chain-Link Fence and Gates to American Fence and Supply Company, Inc. Jessica, can you help us with this?
Mm-hmm. I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for proposal 32.2 Vinyl Coated Chain-Link Fence and Gates to American Fence and Supply Company, Inc. for an amount not to exceed $7,451. Furthermore, the board authorizes a superintendent to enter a, into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. The project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bond Series One is available. Support.
It has been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call. Jessica?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. All right. Next one, Approval of Contract for Asbestos Abatement to Quality Environmental Services, Inc. Mr. Wamsley, did you want to say anything first?
This is just the abatement of all the projects. That's all it is at all three buildings.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract as outlined in the corresponding bid documents for asbestos abatement to Quality Environmental Services Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $175,605. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification of bonds approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by the voters of Richmond Community Schools for which funding from the 2020 School Building and Site Bond Series One is available.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Chris?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Danielle? Angela?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Sheri?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Next, Approval of the Evaluation for Superintendent. Last week, the board conducted a, an yearly evaluation of the superintendent and there is, Chris, there's a sample resolution.
I motion to approve the superintendent's overall evaluation as highly effective, representing a consensus of the board as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Okay, um. All those, what? Did someone say something? Sorry. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
So I had nays from who? Sorry, everybody's.
Maybe we should just do a roll call so we are clear.
All right, uh, Chris?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
Sheri?
No.
Angela?
Nay.
Danielle?
Nay.
And I vote aye, motion carries. Last, Approval of the Eighth Amendment of the Contract for Superintendent. Chris, there's a sample resolution.
I motion to approve the Eighth Amendment of the Contract for the Superintendent, representing a consensus of the board as presented in the attached documentation.
Support.
Jessica, was it you?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Other than just for the, um, viewing audience, uh, there is a, Mr. Wamsley is getting a 3% raise in his contract that goes in line with raises that were given throughout the district. Um, okay, it's been.
To begin with, that's why other people got 3% raises.
I want to mute yourself.
Okay, um, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everyone, um, Sheri and Chris. Uh, thank you for your, uh, support tonight in, uh, all the stuff that you had to do, and even though this is your last meeting, the reality is you're still board members through January 1st, so we still could need you at any time, so don't go disappearing on us. And, um, want to wish everyone safe and happy holidays, and we are adjourned at 10:06 PM.